Somebody have board. Okay, tell us me yours please, if we could, go to the board, please.
I place the Jesus.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Glad to have everybody out today, it's a sunny day, so it's kind of apropos that we kids want to talk about the calendar while we're making this premonition for next year. I don't know how I hope it. Anyway, listen, have our motion for the approval of the March 8th, 2014 attendance please. Curry?
Yes.
And, oh yes, right?
Yeah.
Do we have any more that signed in on the pink sheet, couple of ladies?
Uh huh.
Okay. We're going to modify things just to pay out here this evening. Next on our agenda, the presentation by Mr. Meeke, but if anyone has some discussion on that, so what I'd like to do is agree with the present board here, we'll go down to the presentation section, and we will let these five people do their presentations. And if they feel unsustained with the calendar up there, they can do that too. So, we'll go down to Shelley Gaines and Rick Dowell, and if they can see who the night they can be on, if you and your crew are going to interject here too. All right. So whoever is going to start, come on out.
I think I'm going to let the ladies.
All right. So Shelley Gaines is going to be our first speaker.
I'm actually just the introducer today. Wanted to share with you guys this wonderful, this is a partial team of folks that went to the Cyrt Center, and I'm not going to steal any thunder, but I do just want to let you know that I went with Dionne and this group from West Hamlin preschool because they are doing amazing things already in their classrooms. And so as Dionne and I had started talking about the early childhood education CTE program and finding places for those students to get their training, their hands on training, this is the classroom that is going to be serving as their training site and not them saying anything else, because I know they've worked hard to prepare, so I pass it off to Dionne and the girls at West Hamlin.
Good evening. I remember several weeks ago, I did a presentation on the Cyrt Center, however, we're getting ready to go. Well, we have sent, our team had eleven members from West Hamlin Elementary Pre-K. Not only were they county employees, but they were Southwestern employees also, which was our collaborative partner of preschool. Before we left, we did a book study on the Reggio Emilio approach for beginning teachers. So when I took the teacher to the Cyrt Center, they would have the background knowledge and they would have the vocabulary to, you know, talk to the teachers and have conversations with them. So they were, I was kind of like educating them a little bit. But on our trip to the Cyrt Center in Pittsburgh, we actually stopped off at WVU and visited their early childhood center, which also does the Reggio approach. So that was a really good stepping board for us in getting ready for Friday when we was at the Cyrt Center. I just want to read something to you very quickly, because if not, I tend to ramble with it. I remember when Mrs. Lucas interviewed me for this position, I just rambled, 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 and when I walked up the hallway, I was like, "Oh my gosh, what did I just say?" So, did I answer the questions correctly? But I just want to read something that I wrote down, and then I'll turn it over to my girls back here. What we discovered is that the Reggio child is viewed as a strong, powerful, rich in potential, driven by power of wanting to grow and be nurtured by adults who take this strive toward growth seriously. The curiosity of young children makes them question and research the reasons of everything that surrounds them. This is childhood, this is childhood for schools who implement the Reggio approach. The image of the child is drawn from educational, psychological, and sociological sources, as well as everyday experiences. In addition, the image of the child is drawn from relationships among children and their parents and their friends and their extended family, as a lot of our early childhood kids have now. And their extended family, and that they are observed daily. This is the understanding of children, education and childhood influences everything that happens in the Reggio approach. One thing that we found out on the group there, they value young children. They value talking with them, building language, building vocabulary, having conversations. And the teacher is more or less kind of stepping back and letting the children do it, but going in and asking lots of questions with these children. I feel very good about this approach that we're going to implement. My educators at West Hamlin is going to practice and kind of like work on this approach this fall to implement it, this spring, pardon me, and then this fall, we're going to take it out and go full force with it. So I'm just really, really excited. My educators that are here today have a presentation to show you also about our experience at Cyrt Center. We came back, we were just so excited, we couldn't share, I think I shared some stuff with Mrs. Lucas about it. It was just a wonderful time that we had up there. So we just wanted to share what we did.
Hi, thank you for giving us the opportunity to attend this meeting and to share thoughts about a recent visit that we a recent visit to the Early Ed Center and our vision as we journey forward. My name is Libby Johnson, and I'm one of the preschool teachers, and along with doing this presentation is Summer Nottingham and Ms. Lindy Briney. They are also preschool teachers. And with us, we have Ms. Annette Ross, who is a Head Start co-teacher. And thanks to Ms. Dionne and Shelley and others for working with us from Head Start to make this possible. We received a grant that enabled us to visit the Cyrt Center in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. And the reason for the visit was to observe and learn about the Reggio Emilio approach to early ed. You know, you might think Reggio Emilia is a person, but it's not, it's actually a town in Italy. The visit was very inspiring to all of us, and the facility was just absolutely beautiful. They incorporated a lot of things from nature, they used a lot of soft lighting, and it was like walking into an art gallery. And it was projects and things that the students had done with guidance and support from their teachers. And then when we got back, it caused us to reflect on our own approach to learning and about our environment and the way that we teach. So this time, we would like to share a PowerPoint presentation with you and what we saw.
This is a picture of our traveling team, which as Ms. Libby said, consisted of county teachers at West Hamlin, including Ms. Connie, which can't be with us because she's at Track, her other job, and our fellow Head Start co-teachers, Ms. Ross and Ms. Brenda, and then Ms. Shelley as well, and some Head Start educational coordinators as well. And you've already gotten a little bit of background info, but like Ms. Libby said, a Reggio Emilia approach began in Reggio Emilia, Italy after World War II. And Reggio-inspired schools, families are considered vital partners in the educational process. And as Ms. Dionne talked about, the view of the child is an integral component. The approach emphasizes an emergent curriculum and long-term projects which stem from children's interest. And providing a soothe calming environment creates an ambiance in which learning can take place. As they said, the view of the child in Reggio-inspired schools, they view children as competent co-constructors of knowledge, they're ambitious researchers, powerful and curious. Also, relationships are vital, and they build positive relationships between educators and children so that learning can take place. And in Reggio schools, a strong classroom community and school community as a whole is fostered. Also, families and community resources are utilized to heighten the educational process. And that's one thing that they talked to us about, is how they use the families and the parents, which the parents were professors at the college there and students of the college, so it's a little bit different culture than we have, but still, there are resources that we can use in our community also. These are just some pictures of how they showed the importance of relationship. The one on the left is a bucket filling program, and our counselors in the county do a lot with bucket filling. Each kid has an invisible bucket that they conceal with sparkles by doing kind deeds and using kind words. And then on the right was a message center that kids could write each other messages so that it would cheer somebody up if they were sad at the end of the day to get a message from their friend. These are some pictures of ways they emphasize family relationships. The one on the left is a family communication board, which they had, you know, their parents came into their school every day, and they got to see maybe a daily note or a weekly note to tell them about what's going on in the classroom, have like a birthday child on there. And then the one on the right are pictures of the children's families that they would leave up all year, so the child would see themselves not only as a member of their family, but as a member of the classroom too. And viewing children as competent learners, and children's ideas are valued, and they're given the opportunity to plan what they want to work on each day. And that picture's small, but what it is, it's a planning board, and they had pictures of the experiences that were available that the children could work on, and at work time, the kids got to pick where they wanted to work for the day, and then they would review their plans and make new plans for the next day. And this is a way that they set up their environment to encourage engagement and productivity. On the left, there's an art provocation, they set some flowers out to encourage the kids to paint those flowers, to draw representation of something else. And then on the right is a writing provocation where they encourage children to write their names, and all the kids' names in the class are there so they could write other names and see other letters as well. This is a few pictures of how they use natural materials, and as you can see, it's a calm atmosphere, there aren't a lot of bright plastic colors like you might see in some of their rooms, they emphasize natural materials to, as a way not to over stimulate our children.
They also use long-term projects in Reggio schools as a vehicle for learning. The picture on the left shows some materials used in one classroom for a ramp project. So they would bring in all sorts of different materials for the kids to use to build with ramps. So they, their project, I think, started back in August. I was shocked because they had all kinds of documentation, and I asked how long the project had been going on, and it started in August. So they kept it going, you know, really went in depth with it, and then when they kind of ran out of ideas, that's when they brought the parents in, and they had a meeting and asked the parents, "What else can we do with this project to keep it going?" So they're still going strong with ramps, so you can imagine how much the kids can learn from a project like that.
And just to throw in, some of the words, I was astounded, these are like, this is a pre-K classroom, and they were using words like velocity and friction, and, you know, so they were, they had different materials to try to figure out, you know, well, if you lift, they would say things like, "If you lift it higher, it slows it down." Or, "If it's too steep, then it falls off." You know, so they were learning all these really intense, much more advanced skills than you would expect a four-year-old to comprehend.
Because you can get so in-depth into what you're actually studying.
And then to bring in the community, learners as part of the community, they had, you know, different classrooms, and one classroom, which was toddlers, actually, they were playing in their piazzas, and they couldn't get their cars to go down the ramp the way that they wanted them to. So they had the toddler class write a letter to the pre-K kindergarten class, asking them if they could help them figure out a way to make their cars go down their ramp without falling off the side. So that sparked probably a week or two of another, you know, direction they took on their project. On the right, that was another class, they did a tinkering project, and they were taking apart objects to see what was inside, to see how they worked. You can see there's a telephone, a mouse, or a computer, there are VHS tapes, all sorts of things they were taking apart to look on the inside to see how it worked. And there were various projects going on in each classroom, but that's their vehicle for learning. I mean, they can go in all sorts of different directions, literacy, math, science. The documentation in their center was just astounding. They emphasized the documentation to show students the value of their work, and also to share with the families, because the parents were in there daily. So their documentation was very elaborate, but, you know, their parents were kind of looking at it all the time, so, but they would have pictures on the wall and descriptions of the activities that they were doing to show, and that again emphasizes to the students that what they're doing is important. For us, our journey towards becoming a more Reggio-inspired school, I guess, at our center at West Hamlin, so far, we are evaluating our learning environments and decluttering materials.
Some of us are.
Providing students with more opportunities to become vital members of the educational process through student planning, so we're trying to give our students the opportunity to choose and to make a plan for what they want to work on that day.
We've started this just in two weeks, and my kids come in, "Is it work time yet? What are we going to work on? Is it work time?" And I've actually let them, you know, we're at a point where some of them are writing, so on my board, if you do a walkthrough, there are my lesson plans, and then under that, it says kid plan. And at the end of the day, we evaluate, you know, what we've done and what we need to move toward the next day.
So that gives the kids to have more ownership of what they're working on, and, you know, it may look like when you walk into our classrooms, like it's playtime, but, you know, and for some of them, you know, they're maybe at the developmental level that they may just be playing at the sand table, but they need that sensory experience. But other kids that are more advanced may be working on a project where they're building and, or we're working on building bird nests or birdhouses, so they all have a plan. And also, we're working on setting up provocations to encourage engagement, so giving them more opportunities to become more engaged. Doing this approach might be a little easier if our environments were more conducive to what we would like to do, but we are limited with our space. So to end our project, I would like to remind you all of our bathroom issue at West Hamlin, specifically our preschool classrooms, we don't have bathrooms, and it's a problem. So that ends our presentation. Do you all have any questions?
I was just going to add, the other thing, kind of at a broad, yeah, I can control myself, at a broader level, there are some constraints by, by laws and regulations, and so there are now a group of us, there were only forty-five people at the Cyrt Center when we went to visit, and so for us to have, we had a quarter of the people there who are represented up in Lincoln County, that's really amazing. But we made connections with other people, both at WVU and at Cyrt Center and some other places back here in various parts of the state that are also interested in this model. And quite honestly, it's not board regulation so much as it is, like, state regulations, you know, if you're going to be rated as having an excellent environment for a pre-K classroom, there's a whole long list of things that you have to have, which creates clutter, because if you have to have, you know, seven adult-sized dress-up clothes for each gender, and so many that are multicultural, you can imagine that the dress-up area becomes cluttered very quickly. And so some of us are going to be moving forward some conversations about how to perhaps encourage some shifts in regulation and policy that will better support this model, not just here, but in these other places across West Virginia that are interested in doing this. Because all the research shows that this model is, there's nothing that we do in this country that compares to the outcomes and the results and the engagement, the long-term engagement of children and families in learning the way that this model does. So, we got the local stuff going on, and then we've got some statewide stuff going on.
Do I have any questions at this point? Sounds very intriguing.
I have a great early ed staff educators that's in on this, so we're going to move forward with it. They actually had their first project-based training on Friday here at the whole county, I bring it in, so.
We used to, that was like, probably leaves my, is this not just at West Hamlin Elementary?
For this spring, yes it is, because they're working on perfecting this approach. And then next fall, we hope to branch out one school at a time. So they are the traveling educators, they're the ones that's going to be training our other schools. I hope to write this grant again next year and take another staff up there.
I have a question for you. It seems like, from your presentation, that a large part of the success of this program is dependent on family involvement. Is that right? Have you started attempting to get parents involved, and if so, how successful is that at this point? Because it seems to me, being somewhat new to this organization, but having had children in the school system here for a number of years, that a lot of children's parents aren't going to get involved no matter what you do. So how are you going to change that culture to get the families involved to make this approach successful?
Here's the answer today, I'm right here.
Just starting this week, we are all working on projects like trees and birds, and one of my parents happens, I was just in conversation with her, and she has a variety of birds. She has lovebirds and parakeets and turkeys and chicks, so she's going to bring them to school, and where all of the students are going to have the opportunity to learn more about the birds just from the real birds.
And maybe it's man on, you want to say something for?
I'm Head Start, and in our program, and I am an educator, I'm one of the teaching staff and everything, but in my experience with Head Start, we welcome, we work with the whole family, not just the children that's involved, we work with the whole family. And we encourage parents to come in. Well, parents are not allowed to be in the classroom in Lincoln County rooms, so that was a big culture shock for me, because I was used to parents being in the classroom, and now they're not allowed to be, so that's one thing that we would like to be changed.
That's kind of a barrier, I mean, it's a volunteer, if they don't have the volunteer training, that's hard, because they can't really do a lot at the school, so.
Where's that prohibition from? Is that a local or a state issue or what?
I don't know if it's local, if it's school, but we were told that the parents are not allowed to be in the classrooms, so, but anyway, they're not, they're not in there, but parents do come, because they used to come with, you know, you wouldn't get a lot, then you get some that, oh, not again, but then you get some that, when they start through, they're like that, but then by the end of the year, from your modeling, they become staff, because I myself am a past parent of Head Start. I started out volunteering in the classroom and got hired on and got my associates and got on, and now I'm a Head Start teacher, educator, and I'm a co-teacher in the classroom. And I worked my way in, and without that volunteering hours and getting that training, not getting paid, but that volunteer hours served as experience, and I could use that as for experience. And I, from modeling, from the teachers' modeling that I worked with taught me, I taught other parents as they come in, and it just kept going, and I kind of miss that, not being able to work with parents. Like I say, some you get, you think, "Oh, not again," but then you get those parents that it's a complete turnaround by the end of the year, and you think, "Wow, they're going off to college, and they're going to get a better job, and they're doing better, and they're hired on, and they're going to be sacked, they're going to be working for their money, they're getting off their checks and everything," and it's a big turnaround, and the experience is greatly appreciated, and it's overwhelmed the wealth that they get out of it from experience.
One of the things that we have had a little parent feedback with, we recently had a small playground renovation, and some things didn't quite as they were planned, and we still have some of the drainage issues that we had before, so we sent out a playground survey to try to get some parents to come and repair that. We have had some good feedback with that. And we do do weekly notes that kind of get them involved, and we do school webpages, but as I learned this week, I think the webpage was kind of a barrier in a way, because my kids have been really involved in the emergency vehicle project. So on my note last Thursday, I encouraged their parents to come Friday and see their vehicles. And one parent showed up, and I asked his kids when they came back, "Why didn't you come?" And they said, "Well, my mommy's seen the pictures." They've seen the pictures on the webpage, so there's no point spending time, but they're missing all the documentation, and the working horns, and the working lights, and the spinning steering wheels. So I think we can kick ourselves sometimes when we give them too much information without having them come.
And that's hard, because they work with circuits and batteries and lights and sirens, and they can tell you about the circuits and what the process is, looking at stuff up.
So is the long-term success of this educational approach dependent on active parent involvement in the classroom?
I wouldn't say dependent. I would say it would help in a lot, you know, with their culture, I mean, it's just the reality that we're not going to get ninety-five percent of parents, I mean, we may get to about a fifty percent parent ratio of parents being involved and doing things, but I think that's just kind of the nature of our, that's just a cultural barrier, in my opinion, as to where we live and kind of the mentality of our parents, and, you know, they're in school now, and they're yours, and that's kind of their attitude a lot of times.
At the Cyrt Center, a lot of, they have parents that would come in, maybe when they come to pick up their child, and the parent will stay and document for them. They'll take, the parents will go and take pictures for them, take notes, you know, because we take and go to notes constantly on development, and they have parents helping them out with them. But like I said, they have parents that are professors at the college there, you know, we don't have parents.
This model is being successfully done with very similar settings, similar context, similar economic factors, similar factors. I mean, there is an early Head Start program in Kentucky that is in a double Y that does the Reggio approach. Obviously, they're low income, because they're all Head Start families, and they have tremendous parent involvement. So culturally, I would think that they're very similar. Are we there, are we going to be there like that? No. But truly, this approach, it's much bigger than just family. It's, it is children, educators, family, and community. And all of those pieces, I would say, are vital. What piece is more important than another, I, I mean, I've been to Italy, I don't know, but I would say that all of those pieces are vital. But another example that I think many of us were really overwhelmed with was their reusing and repurposing of things that were donated from families and from businesses. And just as an example, because I was, I went crazy about this one, we don't have a lot of business here that can give us, you know, "Here's ten thousand dollars to start this new center." But blocks of wood and, you know, bolts and tools, or, in the Tupper Room, there's a basket of old, you know the old rollers that are stinky? I know, man, you don't know I'm talking about that. There was a basket, a little, like, five-inch basket full of those rollers, and I thought, "What in heavens, what are they going to do with that? What's a two-year-old going to do with that?" Well, so I had to ask the teacher, because I really was dumbfounded. They roll them in clay to create texture, they nest them inside of one another for children who have textile, sensory, you know, they get sensory stimulation. For people who have problems with the big Legos and stacking, those stick together and so they can stack and build. say they can stack and build. We have resources in this community. And I think when people know that they can go to their junk drawer and grab a handful and throw it in a Ziploc bag and bring it to school because their kid can use that, somebody's gonna feel like they can get involved in a way they've never felt that they could before. I don't feel comfortable coming in reading maybe to a child, but I've got a bunch of junk in a drawer that I can bring, or I've got, you know, some old boxes in the garage, or I've got chickens. Or, so it's figuring out, I think, all those different ways to value parents and the role that they can play as well.
And kids can take just about any kind of junk and create something really, really nice and unique. Very interesting. And then they can tell you about, and they build their language.
Uncle Matt, Grandpa, Grandparent, I realize younger children, the parents will get more involved than they do when they move up in class. But she was talking about the barrier of the volunteer classes they had to take. I think we've gotta be very careful what we eliminate here. We don't necessarily want every parent in that classroom.
I, you got distractions then? You all know, you know, if your mom or dad's there, you're gonna, so I agree with that on that. I thought of that too. Maybe that was one of the reasons for that.
Well, what we did in a case like if a parent couldn't volunteer in the room where their child was, they would volunteer in a different classroom. So they wouldn't necessarily be in there. And then when it calmed down and it was okay, maybe then that parent could rip in and out.
Like, working out a schedule as parents coming in will be something.
And it would be limited.
This school year is almost over. Next year, there would be a possibility of the parents that took the volunteer training, you know, they have to take that initiative, which that's sometimes the hardest part, to get them to go to the training. And then kind of work out a way for them to come in once a week and read, or to come in every so often and do something, and work out a schedule to kind of wean out, you know, the, just for lack of better words, the ones that just shouldn't be in there. I mean, we know, we know, you know, they're around.
Well, they aren't there all day.
And they don't need to be there all day.
Right, that's what they're.
There are certain times that would be very helpful, and other times, especially they're not there.
That makes, makes perfect sense. Okay, if others or requests, Ms. Lucas?
I don't have a question, I just have a comment. These educators have been here so many times and mentioned that bathroom. And to me, it's kind of embarrassing to me, because this has been something that they have requested, and they've been very nice about it, they haven't been mean, and I just feel really bad, I want you to know. I feel really bad that we can't do that. I know Birdie's gonna look at me and say, "You know we don't have the finances," but I wish we could do something. I've got a Cass, my youngest one, is coming this next year. When he has to go to the bathroom, I mean, you better run with him, because if not, he's gonna go in a corner somewhere.
And we'll have to take teen out.
They're right there.
And then just wait for the class of the kids that are training out there.
Yeah, or if they're graders.
I just feel really bad about that, that, you know, we try to do best.
We commit to that, to date it the next time it appears. Of course, as everyone knows, up until a couple of weeks ago, I think Ms. Lucas was gonna talk about that this evening. And we didn't know whether we were gonna be in the red or the black or what next year due to the penalty and all those implications. So maybe there's a little bit of lexicon there, but Birdie's probably saying, "Be careful now." But anyway, we're certainly, I agree with what Carol said, and that'll be something we'll look at further.
And Carol, I want to say, we do have a Plan B. We're working on a situation at West Hamlin to get our pre-K babies maybe a rest.
Good, Dionne.
Without constructing, we'll have to get architects or anything, so.
We used to have, a long time ago. Okay, anything else in this regard? Rick, are you gonna speak tonight, or?
I am.
No, I just, I think that's your guy.
Thank you all.
Thank you very much.